We haven't done that yet.
No.
We haven't done that yet.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of January 15th, 2019. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our board is kind of shrinking here, I'm going to do Appointment of Alternates tonight. So Tony, I'm going to need you as an alternate, and Kate, would you accept that position? Okay. I'm going to do the roll call of members. Michael Proto, Chair.
Stephen Weber, Selectman's Rep. Tony Turecki, open it.
Kimberly Queen, and Vice Chair. Kate Stevens, Alternate.
Okay. First off, public input on non-agenda items, items not on the agenda for this evening. Is there anybody have anything with non-agenda items this evening? Hearing none, I will, you know, close the public input on non-agenda items and go to first order of business this evening, which is the public hearing for the adoption of the Community Design Chapter of the Litchfield Master Plan. This is a public hearing to get comments from the public concerning the Community Design Plan that the Planning Board has put together. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to comment? Hearing none. I will assume that the public hearing is basically closed on the Community Design Chapter, unless anyone has anything. So I think the next order of business then would be for us as a board to basically approve the Design Chapter. And I would entertain a motion this evening to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve the Community Design Master Plan Chapter.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you all. Okay. The second order of business this evening. Mel's Funway Park, an application by Wayne Caulfield, Michael Akamondo, and Joan M. DeRocher, 448, 450, 454, and 460 Charles Bancroft Highway, an application for a lotline adjustment between Lot 7 and 17 on Tax Map 20, and a consolidation of Lots 17 with Lots 15, 19, and 21-1. Non-residential site plan to depict the removal of the existing driving range and layout of a proposed bumper boat pool and several kiddie attractions. Further amend the site plan approved June 6, 2017, to allow permanent enclosures of the three pavilions and amend the site plan approved February 17, 2015, to allow a permanent fence to screen a portion of the hayride path. I see Attorney Pearlman here for the applicant this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
And certainly introduce yourselves to the board and...
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Andy Pearlman, Attorney with Pearlman for your applicant Mel's Funway Park and their respective trusts and the Joan DeRocher Revocable Trust. You know my crew. Brent Cole from Keach-Nostrom is with us, Michael Akamondo, Wayne Caulfield from Mel's Funway Park. And we have a number of things to go over with you, Mr. Chairman. And I will tell you at the outset, we are requesting conditional approval of the lotline adjustment and the site plan at tonight's hearing. I think to begin is where I'd like to begin with where we left off from the last hearing. Coming out of the November 20th hearing that we had with you, the board had a number of requests that they would like to see on the plan, and I would like to call those out to you. I trust you received all of our submittals that we've made all along the way, including up till today. So as to the plans, Brent and I are going to kind of do this as a tag team, and I'm just going to run down the bullet list that I worked with Jay McCarr and Joan McKibben. One item that you wanted is to show the area limits and estimated parking capacity on the Joan DeRocher Lot and the Carcano Lot across the street. We've done that. We've shown that on the plans.
That's on Sheet 1. You guys will find it here. This is the Carcano piece, 150 to 300 spaces across the street on the newly adjusted lotline. You'll find 450 spaces approximately located there for Sheet 1.
And those spaces are in addition to the paved spaces that are on the Mel's site proper. You asked us to show the approximate locations of the 11 temporary lights that Mel's installs for the Spooky World haunt nights, and we've shown those along the DeRocher Lot and internal to the Mel's Lot as well. You've asked us for additional detail for the existing haunt box that's shown on the plan. That's known as the Carnage Lot. We did provide some photos, and I will come back to this point because we have fencing that we want to discuss with you and show you what we're doing there. We have identified all permanent structures. The only addition to this mix, in addition to the bumper boat facility, were the two barns that were out on the haunted hayride. We are showing those. Other than what we were previously showing, everything else is non-structural. There were the two barns out on the haunted hayride. We have the approximate location of the non-structure haunts that are out along the haunted hayride. And Keach-Nostrom put their little bubbles around each of the haunt and tried to describe what the haunts were. We have shown the approximate location of the hayride path. You'll recall that when we did the permitting some years ago, you know, we really just showed a line in the woods, but the Keach-Nostrom folks actually plotted the line, walked it with a GPS, and that's what's on our plans today. You asked us to add fence details, and on Sheet 14, we have three different types of fencing shown on the plans. And on the site plan from Sheets 9 forward, we identify areas where there's a split rail fence, there's the fencer on the bumper boats, there's the chain link fence around the mini Mel's area. So we've identified all the fencing. And again, I'm going to come back to the carnage fencing for you. With respect to renderings, you've asked us to provide better renderings of the pavilions and the bumper boat buildings, and we've done that with my submittal. I had a package. My letter of December 21 had a number of exhibits, and that included the bumper boat pictures and elevations of what's going to be behind the pool area, and that structure is primarily a storage facility, but it has the facade that you're on the water, you know, enjoying the bumper boats. And likewise, for the pavilions, we provided both a black and white in color picture of what the pavilion's going to be. They're going to be stained a brown, hopefully so it kind of blends in with the area, with the background. It's going to look like an old barn eventually, you know, as it weathers. On the plans, on the notes of the plans, we added the hours of operation. We added the DOT. The hours of operations at Note 21, the DOT permit regarding the Carcano Lot that we provided last time is at Note 15. We have a no parking provision with respect to 1 Colby Road at Note 20, and we have added notes with respect to the waivers at Notes 22 and 23. We have a reference to the porta potties with respect to Spooky World at Note 19, and we did commit to inquiring with the Police Department about having temporary no parking signs during Spooky World. The Police Department, I can tell you, supports the idea, but the decision is a selectman's decision with respect to the roadways. I spoke with Troy Brown yesterday, and I expect I'll be getting on the January 28th Board of Selectment Agenda. I haven't submitted an email, a request yet, but that's on the agenda to do, and I think it's a reasonable question. I don't see why the Selectmen would oppose, but I will, again, report back to the board what happens with that. Okay, so that's our plan. You want to touch on anything on the plans before I move on?
I'll let you move on and then come back to me.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we provided a number of submittals along the way over the past month or so. On December 22nd, I submitted my full package. Again, that had the additional waiver requests. I'll come back to that. And actually revised waiver request. We had building permit. We provided the building permits for the two barns out on the haunted hayride, and you can see the... What happened there was, you can see the applicant has Peace of Mind Home Improvements on the building permits. Pierre Garand, the local builder, is the owner of Peace of Mind Home Improvements, and he went to Kevin Lynch, the then-building inspector, and said we would like to put up two barns, and he got his building permits and he got his certificates of occupancy that we provided. They did not come back to this board to amend the plan, which in hindsight would have been the right thing to do, but they got their permits, they built them, they're out there, and so we're amending the plans to reflect the status of the property today. Included a number of other things, the bumper boat amenities, the pavilion enclosures, a couple of pictures of the carnage haunt, and we made sure Lou Karen, Lou Karen has comments, Fire Chief had comments that we just received today. Next up, on December 27th, I submitted, you know, we just got these in, we submitted the colored version of the pavilion enclosures. You have those. Again, we'll take any questions the board may have on these. On January 9th, I submitted a letter that I need to talk about for a bit, and so with respect to the carnage haunt, we have been talking frequently with Attorney Hauss and through Attorney Hauss, Mrs. Charbonneau, and what we are proposing to amend the plans is the... Yep, oh, that'd be great. Thanks. Is a solid fence.
Thank you.
I sent this in earlier today with the description of what we plan to do.
There's a site plan on Sheet 3 that shows how we will enclose the carnage.
Okay, great. So let me describe this fence, and let me tell you what we're doing here. The carnage haunt was previously shown when we did the pavilions back in 2017 as a temporary haunt. That has become a permanent haunt that we're now showing on the plans. The... I had indicated that we're going to be painting that a black or a dark green to blend it in. We may or may not do that because of this fencing. Maybe we do portions of it, but the goal with the fencing is to completely block carnage from the Charles Bancroft Highway. We want to take away that visibility so we just see a fence. The fence itself is going to be matching to the pavilion wood. It's going to be the same type of wood, the same structure, just vertical instead of horizontal. It will be stained the same brown that will be with the pavilions, so there will be some consistency out in the field. The panels that you see are 12-foot panels. We will be screening carnage so you don't see it for the road. There are sections of carnage that are higher than 12 feet. So our panel's going to remain at 12 feet, but we're going to cheat the panels by having them lift off the ground, say four feet or five feet, whatever it is, and have shrubs below that, right? So that the actual height of the panel, although the panel itself is 12 feet, you know, will gain 16, 17 feet, whatever we need to block the view of carnage. This is not an inexpensive fence, right? There's a lot of wood here. It's going to go where it is visible from Charles Bancroft. The facing carnage on the right side or the north side of carnage is not visible from Charles Bancroft, so we don't plan to fence that. But we do plan to fence along the south side, the left side facing it, and the front of it. And again, there'll be room for the guests to kind of maneuver within the fence and outside the fence, but that's what we're doing with the fence. We are, will ask, or asking the board that the fence be completed with the Certificate of Occupancy for the bumper boats, which we expect, I'll walk you through the schedule, but we expect it will be early June. And so that's what we want to do with our, with the carnage haunt, and that was discussed in my letter of January 9th and the submittal of the fence that we made today. Questions on carnage?
Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
Feel free to stop. Stop us anytime. The second, the next portion of my January 9th, 2019 letter talks about a proposed sidewalk. Again, you folks heard Mr. Charbonneau's concern about pedestrian safety along the Charles Bancroft Highway, and what we are proposing, working with Mr. Hauss and Mr. Charbonneau, is a short sidewalk that we have shown, or Brent has shown, along the opposite side of Route 3A from a lot, Map 20 Lot 22, that Mike Akamondo and Wayne Caulfield own, along the Carcano Lot. If you're familiar with it, there's some trees and there's a little bit of a berm on that lot, so the walkway will be behind that.
This is Sheet 4, but it was supplementary to the...
Okay.
We have secured permission from the Carcano Company to install a 4-foot asphalt sidewalk. Roughly where we have it shown here, the engineering, the design has not been done for this yet. This is just a rough sketch that we're showing you what we have worked out with our butter for pedestrian safety. It will run from private property abutting Colby Road on Map 20, Lot 22. We are hopeful we can keep this entire sidewalk out of the town's right-of-way, so that's entirely the responsibility of Mel's Funway Park. No town, no DOT responsibility for this sidewalk whatsoever. And to the extent Town Council or anyone needs assurances to that effect, we can certainly prepare that and submit that to the board.
Because if it's on the DOT side of it, it's going to be up to the town to maintain it. So it's got to stay on private property, or it would be, some deal would have to cut between the town and Mel's to take care of that sidewalk year-round.
Well, that's true. Remember, this is not, that's why we want to keep it on property, private property. We don't want this used year-round.
Yeah. So it's on private, obviously, we have to worry about it all from a town standpoint.
Right. And again, this is, this sidewalk gets used on the busier Friday and Saturday nights of Spooky World, so it's not going to get a lot of use, and we're hoping to discourage people from parking on Colby, but to the extent that they, folks park in the, I still call it the pantry pride lot, but Colby pantry pride lot, you know, there'll be a sidewalk to get them off 3A. Now, because of timing concerns, which I'll get to in a sec, we are asking that this sidewalk not be part of a plan, a condition of approval for these plans, but be a condition of the Certificate of Occupancy to be approved by the Building Department because of timing issues that we have going forward with this 2019 season, which I'll, let me, I'll just kind of put a hold on that, and I'll come back to that in a sec. But that's our sidewalk proposal. It runs from, again, from the private property portion abutting Colby Road down to where we have the crosswalk or the crossing area that the detail police escort people across during Spooky World nights. Doesn't affect any of the parking for that area, you know, all in all, it's probably a good amenity for the site. And again, I'll come back to the timing in one second because we also are requesting the shoreline protection and the alteration of terrain permit, the, a condition of certificate of occupancy for the bumper boats as opposed to being a condition of plan approval. To back up to 2015, the haunted hayride needed a shoreline protection permit and an alteration of terrain permit, and everybody missed it because, in honesty, it didn't occur to anyone in the room that a path in the woods would need an alteration of terrain or shoreline permit. It's not like a subdivision with a roadway or a great big building that obviously disturbs a lot of area, so the entire room missed it. Greg Jeffrey was the surveyor. He didn't pick up on it. I've been doing this for many, many years. I didn't pick up on it. Jen Siz was our planner at the time. Just everybody wasn't, we weren't trying to hide anything. It just didn't occur to any of us that it was needed. It occurred to Brent, and he called me a week or two ago and said, "We need AOT." And I said, "Okay, well, let's put it on the table. Let's get it before DES. Let's get it before the board." And so that's what we're doing tonight, somewhat of an after-the-fact permit. We expect, we don't expect any issues with it, but as to timing, the reason we're requesting is the sidewalk, the shoreline, and the AOT permit be tied to a certificate of occupancy as opposed to a condition of plan approval is because of our timing going forward, because we are hopeful that the board grants conditional approval tonight. If you do, I need those, the approval to become final 30 days out. I need plans to get signed on record so that the lender will greenlight a closing and loans going forward. And we need that piece of the puzzle to engage the contractor for the bumper boats so we can engage, so we can open this season for the bumper boats. That's the goal. If we, and so if we have the shoreline protection, the AOT permit, and the sidewalk design and approval will take 90 days ballpark, maybe more, maybe less. If I have outstanding conditions of approval, my plans don't get final until all those pieces fall into place, and that kills the season. We lose the season because we don't get to closing, we don't get to fund the contractor, and, you know, we've just lost another season with the bumper boats and the mini Mel's. So if we tie the approvals of the AOT, the shoreline protection, and the sidewalk to the certificate of occupancy, the town is protected in that we can't open the bumper boats. We can get going, get it built, and get it ready to go, but we can't open until these other pieces come into play, until we get the permits from DES, until we get a sidewalk installed. And, but that gets us to closing, that gets the funds flowing, that gets us open for 2019. That's why we're making a request. It's not, it's a little unusual, and I have seen things over the years tied to different benchmarks. Typically, it's a plan approval, but I have seen things tied to certificates of occupancy, and it does keep the pressure on Mike and Wayne to get, make sure these things happen. But that's why we're asking for those timing concerns with sidewalk AOT and the shoreline protection. I'm going to keep marching on if that's, those board had questions on that. There was a lot.
So my understanding is the certificate of occupancy, you would be looking for a condition on that as opposed to a condition of approval? I guess I was confused. Or it says, because typically it would be a condition of approval.
Right.
So you're looking for us to condition it as, under the certificate of occupancy?
Correct. So we can't open the bumper boats until the shoreline protection permit is in hand, on record with the town, the AOT permit, the sidewalk is installed and inspected. So it does, there is protection there for the town because once we get the bumper boats rolling and building and, you know, getting closer toward opening, Mike and Wayne have to make sure everything else falls into place. Otherwise, it's all for naught.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant so far?
Ask a quick question.
Please.
So are you going for the shoreline protection for the hayride, the hayride path as well? Or is it for the, what is this for, the bumper boats or?
Oh, not the bumper boats.
No.
So, yeah, because, because the hayride ventures into the 250-foot, 250-foot buffer along the Merrimack River, we need a shoreline permit, and because it does that, it also triggers a lower threshold on AOT. If you disturb more than 50,000 square feet rather than the normal 100, now you need an alteration of terrain permit, and that's what dawned on us when we were going through the shoreline process.
Thank you.
Could follow up on that?
Yes, Jay.
So do any of the activities involved in removing the driving range or putting in the bumper boats, et cetera, trigger AOT?
Negative.
I believe if that does trigger shoreline protection and AOT, you would have to go, I believe the Lower Merrimack River Advisory Committee would come into play because it's a DES, and they would be making recommendations to DES as to alteration of terrain.
And we are, we are scheduled to be on their agenda for next Thursday. I'll be there to present the after-the-fact permit and everything that's been going on up there.
Anything else on that?
Anybody?
Okay, thank you. Next up, I'm going to turn it over to Brent because next chronologically, we receive Lou Karen's January 10th memo to the board.
I don't have a lot to talk about these five comments. They are very benign. There are things that have been on the plan that he has reviewed before and must have missed, but it really are labeling things. He wants us to remove a detail, add a couple existing drainage pipes from the existing catch basins, but really nothing of significance that we'll be able to easily address in the plans before sign-off.
Do you know if there are any connecting drain pipes associated with the catch basins? That was a question that was...
Yeah, there are a few catch basins out here.
And I will have to go out there and actually pull the rims and do the survey aspect of it, but I'm assuming something, there is some sort of pipe network, unless there are dry wells in there, infiltration, but we'll find out when we go through the survey practice.
It's not really relevant to the bumper boats or anything, but we'll put it on the plan.
When I read through Lou Karen's comments, I read engineers' comments over the years, and I didn't see anything that was, you know, we want to clean up the plans, but I didn't see anything that was hugely significant. It was just kind of routine engineer to engineer kind of saying cleanup.
It says something about utility pole showing in the area existing or proposed.
Yeah, there's an existing utility pole out there. We wouldn't be proposing any.
Want to run through these just to sort of board this?
So the existing conditions plan shows three drainage catch basins. He wants us to...
He wants us to, there's a few catch basins out in the front here. He wants us to check and see if there's any pipes connecting them. I don't really see how there's any relevancy to the bumper boats, but we'll absolutely pull the rims and see if there's anything out there. They provide the appropriate symbol for the concrete sidewalk. He wants us to add this this symbol here that we have for the sidewalk. He wants us to put it in the legends. This cake, the grading and erosion control plan sheet 12 shows work to be completed. If you flip over to sheet 12, we have a few parking spaces in through here that we're adding. He wants us to shade them. It's not our typical protocol to put shading on these plans. It's pretty obvious to us and and I think the contractor that there's a difference between what exists out there today and what we're proposing. I can add some labels to it to help emphasize that, but these are pretty typical for our plans and we've gotten good reviews from contractors before.
He says, please clarify the proposed construction in the area. I guess so what have we what is what does he mean by clarifying?
I think he's somewhat confused about what actually what construction is entailed over here. There's an existing pavement line here and we're proposing a thicker darker line over here which correlates with the site plan to show nine more parking spaces. I can try to add more labels to it, I guess, but I think it's pretty pretty clear to us at least and kind of goes.
Well, at least, I mean, as long as it's if it's on the plan, if it's going to be on the plan, then it should be clarified. I'm just saying it should be what it is, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, there are labels showing the parking, but we can add even more labels, I guess. He wants us to remove the permanent pavement repair detail. This detail we typically add when there's saw cuts. It has some information relative to how they should be saw cutting the pavement and then we have to do rip up some pavement. It is a utility trench detail technically, so I'll either revise that detail or just remove from the plan. That's what he requested. He also requested that we add the width of the existing of the sidewalk detail. So he wanted us to add a label to this detail, which is the integral concrete curb and sidewalk. So he wants us to add a width here, which we'll obviously do. On the site plan, it shows the width, so this is just more of our standard detail that comes with all of our, I can add some details of that. That's about it.
Does anybody have any questions? Next up, Mr. Chairman, we just today, we well, back in December 21, I made sure Chief of the Fire Department, Chief Retschel, received a copy of all the plans. We got that to Lou and to the Fire Department. And today we received two comments from the Fire Department. One having to do with access to the rear of the property being removed. And we think we think he's, yeah, I put a call into Chief Freitzel, I can't say his name. As soon as I got these comments, I haven't I haven't heard back, but you know, we do want to make sure that they're satisfied with the plans. So apparently, the concern was we're removing an access way to the toward the rear of the property or to the field out back. And and you want to can you speak to that where that is?
So there used to be, if you look at some of the aerial images, there used to be a gravel road where the parking lot is there today and it would connect it in with this old gravel road out back. And it must have provided some access for the Fire Department to have 360 around the facility. He was concerned that we were getting rid of that and putting the the bumper boat pool. So I scrambled today before the meeting to show you how we could easily put a gravel road coming in off of this existing parking lot that just meanders back around and connects into that 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 existing gravel road. We stay out of all buffers. It's very flat out here. It should be easy to supplement some loads to some of the grass with some gravel and provide a steel base on your gravel.
That was one comment. Again, we haven't heard back yet, but the second comment was consider some additional fire protection. And this is one where we we don't know what this where this comment is or what this comment means. There are two fire hydrants on Charles Bancroft directly across from Mills that provide fire suppression of all the yeah, sure. All of the all the buildings where people congregate are are have fire suppression sprinkler systems. And so again, we have a call into them, so but we will assure the board, if you want to make a condition of approval, that's fine, that we will satisfy the chief's concerns. The only the the new buildings that are being added to the mix are the bumper boat storage facade, the elevation, the facade, storage building. Again, it's storage, no one congregating, people aren't going in there. And then they have the barns on the hayride that for 330 days out of the year are either empty or storage or storage, I should say. And again, no one congregates in there except the hayride going through periodically. So again, we will, we hope to reach Chief tomorrow, the day after, as soon as possible. But this was news to us today and again, we can we we've worked with these folks in the past. We've that's why we have the pavilions instead of the tents for fire suppression and we will we will address their concerns. And I think that's it, Mr. Chairman. We have two waivers for the board to consider. And they're really amended waivers from what we submitted last time. We have a waiver with respect to the all the parking requirements for the Durocher and the Carcano fields. And we have a structure area providing all the all the detail on the on certain structures within the property. I can I can do those now or maybe you want to give us a break and we can come back to them? Whatever you want to do.
Well, does the board have any questions for the applicant?
We're running out of things to talk about with Mills.
Okay, what I'm going to do is I'll have you talk about the waivers and then I will probably open up to public comment at that point.
Mr. Chairman, we're seeking two waivers. The first waiver is from section 120 dash 14 from the site plan regulations. And I'm just going to parrot my written waiver request to the board. These waivers are focused on the spooky world parking. And these waivers come out of our kind of mutual goal with Concom and I think the town not to pave the Durocher field, not to pave the Carcano lot, doesn't make any sense to us for the limited use. And so if we're not paving or if we're not striping or if we're not doing landscaping and islands and whatnot, we need a waiver from the parking regulations. And that's all this is. To make us go through that doesn't make any sense. We think we're maintaining the spirit of the farming fields that will continue to be farmed on the Durocher lot. And paving this over would be an unreasonable and a very expensive hardship for the applicant that I don't I don't think the town wants to see and it doesn't do any of us any good. You folks have seen the parking operations during during the spooky world season, see how it operates, how they mow it down, or they not mow it down, but smooth it out. So that's the off street parking waiver. The structure waiver, section 150 dash 7U. We have provided most of the detail for the new buildings. It's not not everything is included, but there's sufficient information with respect to the barns, sufficient information with respect to the bumper boat amenity that we believe we've met the spirit and intent of the regulation providing the the square footage and the areas of the buildings and other other information that we provide on the plans. And given the nature of these buildings, they're not going to be used, they're not going to be or they're just used for storage. We didn't see that there was any additional benefit to the town. The other buildings on the property have been have been there for years, laser plex, the Mills three story, and we provide a lot of that information on the plans. So we didn't see that the additional cost to Mills made any sense. And that that alone acts as a hardship and we believe we've met the spirit of the of the regulation. We have discussed this with Mr. Minkara. We have a staff report. We have, other than tweaking a little bit of the language in what it was suggesting suggested conditions of approval with respect to the sidewalk, we have no no issues with the comments or suggested conditions. I would add that the carnage fence be a part of the one of the conditions of approval. And perhaps I might be missing one or two as well. But that's what we had. Again, we've been working with Attorney Hollis and through Mr. Charbonneau and had a fun sidewalk.
Jay, do you want to add anything just before I?
I think their review is really pretty comprehensive, but I would echo that the board had a number of requests for things that we were looking for on the plans as a result of both the prior meeting and the sidewalk. I think, you know, from everything that I can see, those materials have been added. I would note that some of the things that have been added aren't necessarily focused. They do address the overall site. They're not necessarily focused on the application before us necessarily when it comes to the site improvements for Mills or the lot liner consolidation plan. So nice to see them, nice to have. I think it's good to see the additional parking areas, the information that's related to spooky world and the hayride. I just note that those are not really the core of the application for us.
I had a question about the bumper boats. The building that you're the buildings or the building that's going to be where it is. Is there going to be a system in there or something in there that operates like a motor or something to the bumper boats? I'm not sure.
Well, there'll be, you know, it's a it's a big pool. So there'll be a pumping pump facility thing in there. So, you know, typical what you would see with a big pool, spare parts for the boats, the boats get stored in there off season.
Cleaning stuff.
Cleaning stuff. Anything else in the?
Yeah. Keep the pool clean, the boats during the off season and the pump house.
No.
Other than that, that's all it's there for. We just hide it and keep the lock up.
And what about like, what is it, like bathing facilities or restrooms or things of that nature on the site? Are you going to have a lot of porta potties? How is that going to? How's that going to work? Are you going to have places where people can go and? I mean, obviously, if it's a bumper boat ride, I'm thinking, you know, it's a water sport, so.
People aren't in the water, they're in boats.
They're in the boats.
So there's nobody getting wet. Like we've visited a dozen facilities to check them out and see what they're like. And you get in a boat and you go, it's almost like a go kart, but a go kart that goes in water and much, much slower. You know, that's that's what it is. So it doesn't need changing units or that type of stuff because there's no need to change. You could go exactly in the clothes you're in, zip around and have fun in your office.
But for the record, that's Michael Acamando. To answer your question, there are, correct me if I'm wrong, there are eight bathroom facilities throughout Mills, you know, laser plex, the restaurant, the arcade building. So there are and split between men and women. And that has during the summer season, that has been sufficient to to handle the crowds. During spooky world, there are a number of porta potties scattered throughout the facility.
Before I open it up to public comment, does the board have any other questions they'd like to ask at this time? Okay. Do you have anything else, Attorney Proman?
Not right now. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. I'm going to at this time open it up to public comment. So if there are any members of the public who are here this evening who wish to come
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney at Goddessman and Hollis Professional Association. I apologize, I can tell I'm already about to lose my voice here, which is, I guess, good for everybody. First, I want to commend the applicants and all their work that they've done and Attorney Prohman with working with me and the board, sidewalk and all the issues and Jay's efforts, Joan's efforts. You know, we've been here a long time and we had a lot of comments and I think almost every single comment and concern we've had has been addressed. We have one remaining issue which we want to raise because it's fairly important to us. And we saw the, I guess, the first time I saw the plan, we had seen Andy's letter which said he was going to have fencing, stockade fence on three sides, but we weren't sure how high or what. Now we have details and we have Andy's representation to this board that while it's shown as 12 feet, it will be whatever height is necessary to screen because that is a requirement both in your zoning ordinance and your planning regulations. And and our concern is, those of you who went on the walk know that that haunt carnage is in excess of 12 feet in places. We have a bus stacked on top of a bus, so or on top of a truck. You have a box truck that's up high. So the if you're going to approve this and make it a condition that no CVO will be issued until the fence, the screened fence is constructed, we believe it should be clear that the screened fencing should totally screen it. That is, that's the requirement. When you're standing on Charles Bancroft, you can't see it. So whatever it takes, if they have to lower, they have to lower the carnage. If they have to raise the fence, they have to raise the fence. That's within their hands. We're not out there measuring, but you'll be able to tell and that will be, no CVO should be issued until that has been satisfied. And I think you can you can put that on the building inspector of the town or the town manager, however you want to do it, but that should be an express condition. So it's in the record. As part of that, we had thought it would be a three sided and today we learned it was going to be a two sided and today we see it's on the plan handed out this evening that it's two sided. We think it's going to require a three sided. So again, that gets back to the condition and the wording of the condition and what's important to us. And what's important to us is that it be screened. Whatever it takes, it be screened. If it's two sided and you can run that a little bit longer and it covers it up, you can't see it from Charles Bancroft Highway, then I think that meets the requirements of your regulations and the zoning ordinance. If it can't, it doesn't meet the regulations and so you've approved something that doesn't meet the regulations. So that's our that's our big issue. There are a lot of pictures. You've seen pictures. Rick's got the pictures here this evening. We all know what we're talking about here. There's a pile of stuff. If you didn't take the walk, you can take it. Like I say, there's been a lot of negotiation and I have to, I think we commend the applicant for the detail and upgrading the plans. And we all know now what's out there and we know what it's going to be like and we know that it's going to be screened and we don't have to deal with that. But that is our concern. And if you don't make it clear, there'll be someone who will say, well, it's just going to be a 12 foot fence. Nah, you can see two feet above it, so what? No, the requirement is screened and that ought to be the condition if you're going to approve it. All the rest of the matters, we're in line with the applicant on. I think you're the requested condition that it be approved this evening, provided that no certificate of occupancy issue be issued until carnage, sidewalk and the two state permits. We're we're fine with that. So we thank you for your time and efforts and if you have any questions of us, Rick, do you have anything? But that's really our only point here. The siding, the color, the fit, everything else is fine with us. It's really up to you guys to decide if you're It's really up to you guys to decide if you're fine with that, not us, but screening is the important thing.
I just don't want to be able to drag down to you and see the.
So.
We have pictures.
Thank you. That's all we have.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to comment? Do you want to respond or?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's the discussion Attorney Hollis and I had this afternoon. We are aware of our neighbors' concerns and, you know, we, you know, are proposing that there be four items tied to the certificate of occupancy screening. If you need, I don't think it's going to need as much as Mr. Charbonneau and Mr. Hollis need because, you know, you have pavilions out there, we do have landscaping that's coming in, you, the facade of the bumper boat becoming southbound. You don't, you have the Mels Arcade, you have the Green Monster. I mean, there's a lot of stuff out there that, but nevertheless, you know, we are agreeable that the certificate of occupancy be tied to the carnage fencing, AOT, shoreline protection and the other one I'm forgetting.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, thank you. But that's, what Morgan relayed to you is a discussion we had this afternoon.
And I.
It is critical to me that we cannot see carnage from three.
I understand there's going to be tires removed. That was something that was mentioned.
On the haunted hayride, we saw a stack of tires on the top bank of Colby Brook. I think the plan shows, and Brett, tell me if I'm wrong, I think the plan shows that there's a note right on their tires to be removed.
There is a note, yeah.
Yeah. Well, there's discussion about two or three sides of the carnage fencing. The number of sides, if it takes eight sides, doesn't, that's not the point. The point is to screen it. If it takes two and a half sides to screen it, it takes two, it takes three. Point is, let's not be visible from Charles Bancroft.
Does anybody have any questions?
What about, we're going to make it a condition to satisfy the requirements of the fire chief as well?
Yeah, we will be, we hope to be talking and meeting with them. We're not too concerned about that because we've always, you know, met their concerns and opened up. So if you wanted to add that into the mix, that's fine. And again, the nature of the buildings, I'm not sure they've been out there or tuned into the plans as much as we are, but again, we're not, yes is yes, we can add that on, but we're not too concerned about it.
Tim, do you have anything?
Well, just the one waiver on the structure of area. I understand you don't want to show all the prior buildings or on prior things, but what was still missing? He said there was still, not all the buildings were still there, something about a barn.
Let me, let me get to that.
Waivers have to be included.
I think he was referencing to the detail, to the facade.
So the regulation requires the location, dimensions, number of floors, total area and first floor elevations of all existing and proposed buildings. Right? So we have that information and we can, we provide that with respect to the bumper boat because that's a new building. So that, we have that. The kitty area, the mini Mels area, is at grade, doesn't involve any new buildings. But we have, but we are showing the rough square footage size of the, of the mini Mels amenities. The remainder of the buildings, we're showing the hayride. We don't have elevations for the hayride, but we do have the number of floors being one floor. We do have the square footage. So we're missing like little bits and pieces for the rest of the building. The building dimensions are missing for the other buildings, but we have the square footage labeled on the plans. And we don't have the first floor elevations, but we do have the stories and the locations of the building shown. So, and those are the, those are the existing buildings on-site that have been there for many, many years. For us to go out and shoot it, it's going to cost another couple grand to keep to Nordstrom with really no benefit to the town. So we comply with most of that regulation, 100% of it.
Anything else?
Just traffic flow in general. Nobody seemed to have brought that up. I know we have plenty of parking now. Traffic flow seems all right. Well, it doesn't seem a problem either.
His mostly addressed the parking piece.
I just don't remember hearing another follow-up discussion on parking flow, you know, flow of the traffic. That was a big concern.
I believe we approved that waiver. Yeah, I think we did.
We approved that waiver, yeah.
We did wait.
The traffic impact study.
No, no, not the study, but just, I think the discussion on just traffic flow in general in the parking areas. I don't remember another follow-up discussion on that. It seems straightforward with the field. I'm just thinking of all the points you brought up and I want to make sure we cover them.
Yeah, I mean, there were a lot of points in my letter and I threw them over. A lot of the discussion about traffic, as you say, was about traffic safety and pedestrian safety. That's how we reached a agreement on a sidewalk to satisfy us. Now whether it satisfies you, can't tell, but we think it goes a long way to addressing what we thought were the concerns of people walking in the street and parking and walking and traffic flow. And so, you know, we realize it's a major concession of the applicant to build a substantial sidewalk and we believe that that will solve our concerns. Whether that solves yours, I can't, can't tell you. But that was, you're right, that was really the focus and also the number of cars, how many cars would fit in the parking. That's been shown, so that tells us how many you can actually fit there. Of course, they had shown the dirt sidewalk coming from the new parking area, I mean, the DeRosa parking area. So that was a major improvement. They've got the lights shown. Again, that was an issue for us. But I think they really touched on every base that we had raised a concern over and although we, we harbor some feelings and concerns about the traffic, we realize the police are there, we realize what the agreement is and we do think that the sidewalk addresses it. So we're not, we're not digging our heels in on anything else.
If I could just follow up on the sheet that's just up there now, because we did have a lot of, we did have a lot of conversation around internal circulation and this is where some of the pathways that we were looking for were added to show how people moved from parking areas into the bumper boat area and then also a sidewalk that was added parallel to Charles Bancroft here. Came out of those discussions.
And the flow of the traffic coming out of DeRosa, that was coming out last year. So, yeah, it comes out and down and so everyone knows where it's going to go for Spooky World, but it also tells you where they can go for the Mels, mini Mels, I guess is what we've been calling it.
So everyone's happy? Because that was a big one.
Great. Well, I think what I'm going to do at this point, if there are no other questions, either from the audience or from the board, I think I'm gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more. The off-site parking waiver, is that, is that for year-round or was that only seasonal? I might have just missed that piece.
Well, if they had that kind of business year-round, I mean, don't forget, the DeRosa, Charlie McQuestion Farms, the DeRosa Field, right? And we, we hope that continues for as long as we're all alive. This is really just for Spooky World.
Okay, so it's just after the farm has been used for farming and everything, we're not trying to encroach on that anymore than we are at all right now? Okay.
The corn is taken and then they, then they get out there.
Do we, do we need to have that in writing or down the line, would it be all right if they were using it?
Well, they, they have been using, I think they have a, there was an agreement, I guess, my understanding.
Right, but it's only for this season.
Right.
Do we want to limit it to that so they'd have to come back for additional approval or if you were to grow, I mean, we all want business to grow in Lynch Field, so.
I guess I'm confused, what do you?
If we approve just that they're allowed off-site parking, then theoretically they could go at any time of year as long as they have the permission from the owners to use that any time of year.
Jay? If I could just add, on the basis of this site plan, they wouldn't have the approval because it does say approximate limits of seasonal overflow parking. So this isn't being approved as year-round parking as part of this application.
Okay, all right. That, that was my question.
Just Spooky World.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay. What I'm going to do, I think, since there's no other questions from anybody and there's no concerns, I'm going to, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay? So the public hearing is now closed.
Thanks, John.
And it's going to direct back to the board. What is the board's will here? And do we want to vote on the waivers first and then on to the conditions of approval? What would you like to see happen? And do you have any comments or anything that you want to add?
Would it be easier to break them up? Waivers?
Well, I think we might want to vote on the waivers first and approve those. And then, once we do that, then we can go into the conditions of approval and the conditions of occupancy issues. We only have two of the waivers tonight. So we have the site plan waiver requests for sections 120.14, which is the off-street parking waiver that was submitted for the parking lots at Mels Funway. The purpose of this waiver request was to address any further parking requirements for section 120, 114, particular Spooky World parking. And the town advised Mels that due to the temporary nature of the Nightmare New England Spooky World, the formal site plan approval would not be required. Parking for Spooky World is primarily on the DeRosa Lot, which is map 20, lot 7. And basically, we did have a sidewalk on November and we are presented with the parking operation, we presented the parking operation to the municipal conservation commission on October 4, 2018. Conservation Commission is satisfied with the parking as currently operated and does not want to see an active court field paved over it. So essentially, as requested by the board, we can, the applicant has shown the approximate limits of parking area for Spooky World as to made parking capacity for Spooky World temporary features such as the fencing and lighting, light towers. So basically, this waiver request is being provided for the board's consideration because paving over an active court field basically makes no sense for 24 nights of Spooky World and fully compliance with 120.14 would be an unreasonable hardship for the applicant. So those are the, basically the basis for this waiver. And 150.7U, which is the structure area, our site plan regulations require plans to show the location, dimensions, number of floors, total area and first floor elevation of all existing and proposed buildings. This current plan provides this information for the new bumper boat amenity and the kitty Mels area is at grade and does not involve any new buildings. And the applicant is wishing to submit, well, to comply with 170.7U with respect to the proposed amenities for Mels. Plans show the location of all buildings at Mels with the exception of the two hayride barns. Plans further label the stories and square footage of all buildings. The building permits that the two barns are each 30 feet by 50 feet, with 1,500 square feet. The only item missing from 150.7U was the other building dimensions and first floor elevations. Appears that all the buildings at Mels have been on-site for many years with building, with the building and inspection records on file with the town staff and basically the applicant is asking us, well, it says that they have substantially complied with 170, 150.7U, but that it would be an unreasonable hardship for them to Mels with little benefit for board review of the plan. So those are the two waiver requests. If the board doesn't have any questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion to rule on both the waiver request 120.14 off-street parking waiver and 150.7U structure area.
I'll make a motion to approve 120.14 off-street parking waiver and 150.7U structure area.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? If no discussion, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 500. That takes care of the waivers requests. So for conditional approval, I think that the, and, you know, board can chime in if they want, but I think we want to see basically, as to the carnage haunt, that it is, that there is a fully screened fence, so that it is fully screened and that it is, basically that you wouldn't be able to see it. So from Charles Bancroft, I think we want to make that a condition of approval is, I think most of us would agree that that is something that we want to see, so that it cannot be seen from Charles Bancroft. And we would probably condition the applicant on that, that the fence satisfactory provided that it does not, that the carnage haunt itself, the structure, cannot be seen. So that would be one condition of approval. The other condition of approval would be that the Luke Karen's notes that we talked about this evening, I would also make that a condition of approval. We went over those in detail. I think the recommendation of the town engineer, we would ask that that be made a condition of approval for this project. Let's see. Let's see, an amendment to the plan to show four-foot asphalt sidewalk on map 20, lot 18 and lot 22 from Colby Road to cross. To crossing areas proposed by applicant to be distracted prior to issuance of an occupancy permit for the proposed bumper boat facility, that would be a condition of occupancy, not necessarily a condition of approval. We have the receipt of New Hampshire DES, well, the New, receipt of New Hampshire DES Shoreland Alteration of Terrain approvals prior to issuance of occupancy permit for the proposed bumper boat facility. I would also, you know, also, uh, on that, um, would, um, stress the, uh, that that would be a condition of occupancy. And that, uh, you would obviously have to go before the lower MAMAC, on, go before the lower MAMAC River Advisor Committee, uh, to review, um, those, um, plans and make recommendations to DES. Let's see, there was, um, basically, uh, receipt of the New Hampshire DES Septic Approval would be a condition of approval. Legal counsel's review of access and protective well radius easements would be a condition of approval. Uh, so the town council would have to review those documents, uh, to see that they comply. Also, the fire chief's recommendations, we talked about those and the building inspectors, and their comments, um, as to the, um, issue about the rear of the property and the adequate fire apparatus access to the rear property and structures necessary to provide, uh, appropriate proximity for apparatus and equipment needed for response or extinguishment. Also, a condition would be providing onsite fire protection for hydrant if additional instructions are being con- considered. As to the condition of occupancy or the carnage haunt, the entire front of the carnage haunt will be painted dark green or similar screen color. That will be a condition of approval.
Can I speak with them?
Okay.
Um, if, if, if we may, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to save a couple bucks and pull that back, because if we're gonna have, uh, a wooden wall in front of carnage, there's no sense in painting it, painting behind the wall.
Okay.
In- initially, when we made this proposal, we thought that painting it dark or painting it, you know, dark green would, would be a sufficient screening, but now that we've, now that we've agreed to the, the wall, it doesn't make sense.
So, okay, alright, so you're not gonna worry about that, and then it's not gonna be an issue. Okay, that's fine. So I'll, I'll withdraw that as a condition, as long as, as long, on, on the proviso, that as long as it is completely screened and, and that we cannot see it from Charles Bancroft. Let's see. Obviously, a condition that you'll work with the Litchfield Police Department to post temporary no parking signs along Colby Road during the events. And of course, that you will be meeting with the Board of Selectmen to, um, for any further issues as to no parking signs and so forth.
Yep.
Okay. Let's see. Does anybody else have anything that they wanna add? Oh yes, and the removal, the condition that the tires will be removed, um, from the Hayride.
Alteration of terrain?
Yes, um, the, yeah, well, we talked about New Hampshire DES Shoreline Alteration of Terrain approvals, um, basically, uh, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit for proposed bumper boat facility, so that'll be a condition of occupancy.
And the zoning is, the screening is 40.85.
Okay, and yeah, so zoning and zoning for screening, I guess, is section 408.05 in the regulations, so it'll basically be adhering to those regulations, site plan.
Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I, I just have one comment to those conditions.
Go ahead.
Um, I just need to clear that, uh, with respect to the sidewalk, um, we, we don't intend to be amending the plan, uh, and that just gets me nervous, because when we amend a plan or if we leave a condition open tied to the plan, it doesn't close out the finality of the plan, uh, 30 days out. It, it's gonna take, you know, in, into the spring to get the sidewalk, um, surveyed and designed and, and, and squared away. Uh, it is our goal that the sidewalk, uh, be, um, surveyed and designed and submitted to the Building Department, not necessarily an amendment to the plan. The plans that we submit will be on file with the town, um, but I, I, I just wanna clear that we're not tying the sidewalk to a plan, a, a plan amendment or an open condition of the plan, uh, because my lenders will, my lender accounts will yell at me.
Can we accept an as-built after the fact?
That, that's, that's perfectly fine.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Might be the way to do it, just get the as-built and we can file those.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Jay, that, that's. Okay, so I think, um, rather doing an amendment, we'll basically do an as-built after the fact, um, to the plan. Also, to show the, the sidewalk plan be attached to the, um, the plan itself and be part of the condition of approval. Cause I know it was on a sheet, so, basically part of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I had written down that your, your comments were amended to plans to show asphalt sidewalk prior to CVO. I don't think anybody mentioned, although Andy did, that it be constructed prior to the CVO, so that, was that an agreement?
Well, yeah, cause I did say, proposed by applicant would be constructed prior to issuance of an occupancy permit.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, for the proposed bumper boat facility.
Thanks.
Yep. Think I covered everything. We talked about the pavilion enclosures and elevations and renderings, so basically that, um, the condition that, um, those will be secure or closed off, essentially. Off-season. Just bear with me a second, I'm sorry. Okay, I think that's everything, um, that we have. So those would basically be the conditions of approval for this project. And I think that the board would want to see, um, as part of the, uh, plan. And in keeping with our regulations. If the board doesn't have any other questions or concerns, I mean, I would entertain a motion, um, to conditionally approve this, um, this, uh, plan. As, um, we amended it.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
You'll make a motion?
There's only approved it.
Okay. Motion for conditional approval, um, based on the, what I, um, went through, um, the different criteria, there's a lot of it. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have discussion? All those signify by saying aye. Aye? Don't wait for me! Okay, uh, motion passes 500.
Thank you very much.
conditional approvals, you have your conditions of those typical occupancy, and, um...
Thank you, we appreciate your patience with this whole project and. Which is well.
Alright, thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
Yes, take care.
See you.
Never mind.
Couple years. You ever see the London Eye that's, right?
Paris Wheel.
Oh yeah, yeah.
That's next.
I won't be on the board though, so don't worry.
It's gonna be a big screen cover, that one.
That's right. Yeah, alright.
Good night, guys, take care.
I gotta frame that.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care.
Good evening.
Alright, um. Next order of business, committee reports, any reports from any committees?
Yes. That's the Heritage Commission, we've had our second meeting and we are, took our first pass of the bylaws and we're amending, you know, for a second scrub, but it looks good overall. And, uh, NRPC, we had our meeting and, um, we voted to pass the transportation projects that were on the list.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
And this is unanimous, I believe. Yep.
Very nice.
Yep.
Very good.
That's it.
Okay. Conservation Commission, um, met, um, this month, um, there'll be meeting again in, in February, I believe. Also, the lower, uh, speaking of the lower MAMAC River, local advisory committee meeting is June, June, uh, June, January 24th, um, at 7 o'clock, uh, that's a Thursday in, um, the Nashville Public Library. So, I think I'll be at that meeting, I'm not sure. Okay, any other committee reports? Okay. Jay, do you have anything before I go continue on? That's it? Okay. Um, so, uh, approve the November 24th, 2018 sidewalk minutes. Do we have an opportunity to see those? And does anybody have any comments or questions? They look good, then we can entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Okay, a, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 500.
I missed who made the motion, second?
Steven?
Tony, yeah, Tony second.
I can't approve them, I wrote them, man. That's why I'm talking about them.
No, I'm saying. As long as you can read them, yeah. We also have here the, um, the 18th. And I would entertain a motion, um, if nobody has any questions about those.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 500. Let's see.
I didn't email the non-public, and I think I forgot to print them out. So, I think the way.
Other business, release of escrow account for lot 88 site plan Page Road, multifamily approved, 12617, Joan?
Right, that was the, um, multifamily housing on Page Road, and that project is totally occupied. It's a private road. So, should be set.
So you're looking for a release of the?
Release of that. Not on the housing, just on the multifamily?
On the multifamily, okay. Um, does anybody have any questions, or if not, you can entertain a motion to release those escrow funds for the multifamily?
I'll make a motion to release the escrow account for lot 88 site plan Page Road, multifamily approved on 126 of 2017.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 500. And, uh, release Romano's Pizza escrow. Amended 8/7/18?
That was for the, um, noise complaint.
Okay. Okay, um, I entertain a motion, um, to release the, um, pizza escrow as amended.
I'll make the motion to release Romano's Pizza escrow amended August 7th, 2018.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 500. Joan, do you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Okay, uh, I have one thing, and, and I just wanna do this officially tonight, cause I know we didn't do it at the last meeting. I wanna do a vote, um, to, um, basically move Tony and Kate into their new positions, um, if they, so, are, are you, are you moving, uh, from your, um, as an alternate or no? Did you say you couldn't do it?
As long as, I mean, the only thing that ever comes up is, you know, if they quit.
A full-time member, that, that's basically what we're looking for, cause right now, we're kind of, um, we need, we need full-time members, so I don't know if you're, are you still interested?
I'm interested in doing it, but I just want the board to be aware of, you know, constraints where I might not always be here all the time, so if, if you think I should stay an alternate, that's fine too.
It's, it's, I, I don't wanna, you know, force you to do anything that you don't wanna do, if, if you feel comfortable being an alternate, you can be an alternate, if you wanna move to the full board position, uh, we can, we can move you up.
Sure, sure.
Okay, alright, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna send a letter to the Board of Selectmen, just as a recommend, and to Troy, basically as a recommendation that we recommend her as a full board member, and the same thing, Tony, you'd be interested in being a full board member?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna do the same for you, so I'm gonna do a letter of approval for the board. So, with that said, um, I would entertain a motion, um, that we have both Tony and, um, Kate become full board members, um, going forward, and then I will make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to their approval.
I'll make the motion to approve Kate and Tony. They'll be full-time board members.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained. Alright, motion passes. All right, motion passes 500. So, okay, so I will do that, I will send that out to Troy, and they could, Troy put that on the next agenda for the Board of Selectmen. Okay, great. I have nothing else this evening. Well, it's been a, I think we finally made it tonight, right? How many meetings? Wow, okay, we made it. So I think next time, well, I think Joan had mentioned this today, do we want, we're going to meet in February, or do we need to meet again this month?
I don't have anything.
Next meeting's, next meeting's
That's the last you have, yeah.
That's the last you're scheduled.
Yeah, next meeting's February. So the next meeting's February, okay, very good. So, all right, so I guess for the next meeting in February, I guess we're going to look, I think what we should focus on probably is doing the transportation piece and maybe have a discussion, too, about possible, I know we didn't do it this year, but maybe having something for next deliberative session, or maybe have a brainstorming session or something to talk about things that we may want to. So if you have anything that you may think, you know, maybe we can bring up, especially the thing with the issue with structures, and, you know, we've had this whole discussion about permanent and temporary structures, that might be something to add to the, you know, to the ordinances or the regulations or whatever.
And also on the regulatory side, you know, you don't have to wait till the deliberative session, the board has the discretion of amending a regulation. So if it's regulatory versus zoning, that people have, you know, something in mind, we can always address that.
Okay. So, something to think about, I just thought I'd bring it up there so we can go forward on that. And on that note, I have nothing, unless anyone else has anything, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have discussion? All those that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 500. Thank you, everyone out there for joining us this evening, and we will see you in February. Good night.